Ms. Hunt? I have to add 1.4. Elaine is not with us tonight, and so it's a motion to appoint Bev Miller as our clerk pro term for the -- for this meeting. So can I have -- is this a motion? Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Right. Motion carries 4-0. Bev, you are district clerk pro term. All right. So now we can do our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And our first order of business, as usual, is hearing from Dr. Harrison. Lots of things to talk about with the school start.
Motion to accept the agenda.
Oh, sorry. I missed that. I'm a little rusty. All right. Can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's four votes, and now we can move on to Dr. Harrison. Sorry.
No, my pleasure. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. One of the things that we always look forward to this time of year is hearing from our principals. We always invite our administrators in to say a few words, to talk about the opening of school. So with that said, I would like to invite our Dowsling team to head to the microphone in the back of the room, Randy and Meg, to tell us about the successful Dowsling opening. So Randy and Meg?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, and good evening, everyone. It's always nice to start the school year off here and tell you about our opening days. It was a successful start to the school year. Those of you who might have been visiting Dows over the summer around summer camp might have had the same concerns I had, that we would actually be ready for the first day. But our clerical staff, our custodial staff, our veteran teachers helped out our new teachers, and the place was glowing, and everyone was ready for the first day. We waited outside anxiously for those buses as they arrived. There was a few glitches with some buses arriving a little late, but that's typical for the first day of school. Sometimes there's new drivers, new monitors, new routes. Sometimes parents are trying to get that, you know, perfect back-to-school picture on their phone at the bus stop, and that sometimes slows things down a little bit. But everyone got to school safe and happy. The first day was a great first day. As is the tradition for kindergarten, they arrived at 10 o'clock with their parents on the school buses. Lots of first-day jitters, mostly from parents, but the kids were smiling. They seemed to have a great first day. It was a little warmer than we anticipated. It felt like it was summer, but it was actually the first day of school. So as I said, it was a really successful first day, thanks to everyone on staff who contributed to get our building ready, to getting classrooms ready. Meg will tell us a little bit more about all the new people that are joining us at Dowsling. The one funny little story that I can share with you is that as the kindergarteners were leaving that morning, and, you know, we were out there giving the high fives and saying goodbyes, and I said, you know, one of the, of course, things that I said to most of them is, "I'll see you tomorrow, see you tomorrow, great first day, see you tomorrow." And one of the students looked up at his mom and says, "You mean I get to come back tomorrow?" So I hope that he has the same enthusiasm 179 days in and 12 years in. So that's one of the things that I thought really sort of epitomizes the first day of the school. I think that we all get really excited about that first day, just like he did. So, Meg?
So over the summer, Irvington welcomed quite a few new families. Dowsling in particular, quite a few new students, and also luckily, quite a few new teachers, new to Dowsling and new to Irvington, but not new to teaching in general. And as we met them and the families toured the building and came to register and meet with us, they were all anxious and excited, and then meeting the new teachers and showing them where their classrooms would be and watching them set up, they were all anxious and excited as well. And on the first day of school, as parents brought their children in to meet the new teachers, I kind of stood back for a minute to watch and see whose smile was the broadest: the parent, the student, or the new teacher. And then I realized in the end, it was us, because we had to put all these people together and bring them all together, and it was just nice to see the joy on all of their faces. So it was really a wonderful first day. So at last count, at Dows Lane, we have 537 students. Over the summer, we had 15 new families enter Dows Lane, some of the families with multiple children in multiple grades, couple of twins. So it was quite an active August. The 15 families all came in August. From August 5th up until the first week of school, we were welcoming new people with the help of PPS, Gail, Angelina, registering those families, getting them in e-school and getting them their bus routes and getting them into the building as quickly as possible and as seamlessly as possible, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think just on that point, just to hearken back to a couple of years ago and only because I've been in the last couple of meetings, you know, this, I think what we're seeing in Dows Lane is the same thing that we saw two years ago at Dows Lane and what we're continually seeing in the real estate market in Irvington. I know that in the past eight months or so, we've had 40, 40, 4-0, new families, it's probably more now, move into Irvington mainly for the school district and bringing young kids in. We're seeing that at Dows Lane with the increase to seven sections again as we did two years ago. So unlike a lot of districts that are seeing contraction in their numbers because people are moving out, we continue to maintain through the relatively good market, a steady turnover of families that want to come here, and they're choosing us, I think predominantly, for the school district.
So true. And we're hearing that from the realtors that are calling to introduce families and families that are calling, that are looking for homes. And we had many conversations over the summer with families exploring the possibility of sending their children to our schools on a tuition basis, primarily elementary-age students, and while they were seeking homes. So there's more to come, for sure. And, you know, Meg talking about the new teachers and the new children, and one of the final days of summer break, I can remember walking through the halls, maybe with Randy doing one of our walkthroughs, and there was a new family coming down the hall, and someone pointed out, "There's your teacher," and they were brand-new together, a brand-new teacher, a brand-new student to the school, and the student went in and helped the teacher set up her room. And you think, "Well, what an experience to get to know one another."
That's right.
But there was an immediate bond, and I think we're fortunate to have so many great families wanting to be a part of our community and a number of great teachers that have joined us along the way. But with that said, there's a lot of great things happening at Main Street School, Ms. Chapnick. So welcome to your first back-to-school principals' report, and we're excited to hear how your first days were at Main Street, as well as the students and the faculty.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Dr. Harrison. Good evening. You want me to break out in song?
Get it quite close to it.
Can you hear me?
Yes, that's it.
So Main Street School had an amazing opening, and just like Dows Lane, it really was in large part due to the dedication of the staff, the custodial staff, the secretarial staff, and the teaching staff. Teachers were in all summer, you know, whether it was just to come in to say hello, to set up their rooms, to check to see how things were going, just to say hello. Marilyn Baritella and now Pat Bichelli, the new addition to the Main Street School office, have been stellar. I mean, they are on it, and they are just, they know the ins and outs of everything that happens at Main Street School. So I've been so fortunate to walk into a school building that is just moving forward in so many ways, and I feel so lucky. So thank you again for the opportunity to be the principal of Main Street School. So we start the year with 126 4th graders and 140 5th graders. We actually have 15 new students, 10 new 4th graders and five new 5th graders. We have six sections, 4th grade and 5th grade. And so our year has been off to a great start. In my summer letter, over the summer, I sent to the kids telling them that in my transition to Main Street School from the middle school, I was transitioning as a reader also. So at the middle school, I read a lot of young adult books, but coming to Main Street School, I was now considering, what are the books that intermediate students read? And so I sent them, I wrote to them and asked them to please bring in a book, an idea of a book that they read over the summer that they just couldn't put down. And I sent a model, and I told them that I had read Wonder. So I don't know if anyone's read it, but if you haven't, it's a must. And so in my first week at Main Street School, I met with, I had the opportunity to go into all the classes, and I met with all of the children and had conversations that were framed around the question, "How does reading build community?" And in Main Street School, where the character education framework questions really guide the work in every aspect of what the children do, we connect, we made the connections with this conversation. And so I held up the book, and, you know, the kids knew that that was the book I read, and I asked, you know, "Who read what book?" And you could just see kids' eyes light up as they shared what books, and they felt the connection, immediate connection, to other kids in the room who also read a similar book or something from the same series, or who actually read Wonder. And so I finished one session with one of the classes, and at the end of the session, you know, one of the students came up to me and she said, "Ms. Chapnick, I really, really, really want to read Wonder. Do you think that I could borrow your copy?" And I thought, like, "Really? Like, hmm." I said, "Okay, so let's go up to my office." So we went up to my office. I couldn't, I was like, "Really? That was amazing." So we went up to my office, and I said, "Okay, you can borrow it." And she said, "I promise, I'm a really fast reader. I'm going to read it over the weekend, I'll give it back to you on Monday." And so I said, "Well, you need to write down on a Post-it, you know, let's, you know, give her a strategy to remind herself to make sure that you bring it in." So she wrote down, "Remember, you know, to bring this book back to Ms. Chapnick on Monday." And so she leaves my office, I give her my book, she walks out, she takes it, I'm thinking, "I hope it comes back on Monday." The end of the day, it's two hours later, I'm packing up to go home, and I see on the desk my Post-it. Bring to, she had left the Post-it behind on the desk, "Bring back to Ms. Chapnick on Monday." The good news is, she came in Monday, like, not, you know, wanting to tell me all about the book and how much she loved it, and if you know the book, there's an extra chapter in this version that she hadn't had, she hadn't had the chance to read previously, and was so happy that she had the chance to read it. So I learned a little bit, a reminder to myself, as I moved from middle school, probably middle school students would leave it on the desk, too, but also for intermediate students, you know, just to be mindful of the expectations that I have for kids and what supports that I make sure are in place as we move through the year, when I think, "What do I want from kids?" And so it's been an amazing start to the school year. Everybody, you know, when you walk by, everyone's happy and beaming what's happening in classrooms is just wonderful. Classroom communities are really coming together, so I'm looking forward to a tremendous 2014-15 school year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Joyce, and what a great, powerful way to start the year with a focus on literature, school-wide. And what Joyce did in PUG is that she did something very similar with the faculty. And attending the first faculty meeting, she had all the faculty engaged around literature and their reading and how they were going to build a professional learning community with those connections. So great start to the year. So on to the middle school with Mr. Sotile and Ms. Daly. You know, it's hard when we step back to think that we have, you know, a real veteran, consistent team, and to look at all the transition here and the excitement associated with that, and we have the pleasure of welcoming Allison to her first back-to-school remark. So, welcome, David.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Thank you to all the members of the board. It was a really a great opening for us as well, the middle school, to echo the comments of both Randy and Joyce. We also welcomed quite a few new students to the middle school. We have 12 this year, not quite the 27 that we had last year, but still a considerable number nonetheless. And in addition to those new students, we had more new staff members than we had had in years past as well, due to some changes district-wide and so forth. So quite a few new faces. We opened our doors to 419 students last week, and in a cruel joke from Mother Nature, summer came on September the 2nd rather than on June the 29th, when we had been ready for it. So despite the hot weather, I want to just say many, many thanks to the PTSA for continuing to sponsor our opening day barbecue that helps our 6th graders kind of have a delicious and fun way to kind of get into middle school. We run a program each year that gets a little bit better each year, where our new students are paired with some of our 8th graders that serve as what we call pals, peers assisting in leadership, to help bridge the gap for them as they enter middle school and to help them become much more familiar and much more comfortable with some of the aspects of middle school that are very different. That's combined with some meetings with both Ms. Daly and myself that we open the school year with, and the work of our teachers who work tirelessly to really help students transition as they go from the Main Street School to the middle school. You know, and it wouldn't be a complete back-to-school report without at least one story related to lockers.
Any veteran of middle school orientation programs knows that whether it's students
or parents, the questions about lockers are abound. And so over the summer, as we gave a lot of tours to our 6th grade parents who, you know, got a chance to kind of walk around the middle school before the year started, the subject of lockers was always something that came up. And I do take the blame for this, I guess, although I didn't realize it at the time. I made a comment on most of the tours that I had seen in one of the students' lockers the prior year, that the student had actually hung a battery-operated chandelier from the hooks on top of the locker. Well, lo and behold, that little chuckle that I got from that story apparently turned into something along the lines of wildfire because the number of students that have been coming in with their mom or dad at 5:00 any afternoon to hang a chandelier in their locker is quite elevated for last year. They are all battery-operated, there's no power to the lockers, but nonetheless. So definitely making themselves feel at home as they are new students at the middle school. You know, students are filled with enthusiasm, and we have a lot to look forward to in the near future. We're looking forward to open house on Thursday. We're looking forward to getting our clubs ready to begin with our club fair that will happen at the beginning of October, and off we go from there. So there's a lot, lot happening. Modified sports started on Monday. It is a time of great enthusiasm and great activity at the middle school, so we're very excited. One of those new faces that I am very happy to introduce and here to share a few words of her own with us about her first few days in middle school is Allison Daly, our new assistant principal. So Allison.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to meet and see all the board members. I'm very grateful to be here. When I thought about speaking tonight, I thought about something that many of those of us who are educators, a familiar phrase, and that's the telling detail. And I would like to share just a few telling details that I've noticed in my short time here at Irvington that really speak to the beauty of Irvington. On the first day of school, there was a very, very nervous 6th grader clutching her schedule who approached me, and shakily was asking me how she would get to S-106, which is in the science wing. And as I started to give her directions, an 8th grade boy politely interrupted me and offered to walk her to class, which I thought was very much a telling detail. On the second day of school, I was struck when I was out on recess duty, and three 8th graders, a mix of boys and girls, approached me and decided to introduce themselves, welcomed me officially to Irvington, and asked how my transition to the middle school life was going, which again, was another telling detail. I think the one boy's particularly charmed that I went skydiving, so he's going to be my new friend when he heard that. But just these, these are just two of the many, many, many examples I could share from just the past two months that I've been here, meeting families, teachers, of just the amazing, warm, welcoming spirit that is the entire Irvington community. And I think that those two examples I also shared really speak to the district's commitment and importance that they put on character building from kindergarten through 12th grade. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing the chandeliers when we do our rounds tomorrow at the middle school, and I'm curious to see if we're going to see any in the administrative offices. So Dave and Deb, would you like to tell us a little bit about the opening at the high school, please?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. And obviously, the theme of the night is just a wonderful and exciting opening, and at the high school, we too experienced great success. So many great opportunities as we started the year. I know that even before we had our first day, we had the great chance to meet with our 9th grade class for our freshman orientation, and it was a great entry point for them to not only meet their guidance counselors, but for all of us to really speak about that transition and that important, exciting step to come into the high school. Obviously, the custodians and the entire staff worked so well to get the building ready, and there are some new changes in our main office, and we're really excited about being able to welcome all of our visitors into our home and our space. Some interesting stories and opportunities that happened over the summer. We had over half of our faculty members come in and do summer work, specifically around curriculum mapping and really aligning units and lessons towards 21st century learning and Common Core and all of the things that we've been so focused in in this district. And I had the great chance of seeing it manifest itself. On day two of school, I was able to walk around and get into many of our classes and to see that it felt like October already, and that there was deep learning going on in so many, really all of our classes. In some cases, teachers and students were administering and taking pre-assessments, but one story is that I received an email from one of our teachers so eager to have me come in and visit and to share an experience about the marshmallow challenge. And it really speaks about problem-solving and collaboration, and it was in one of our science classes, actually a few of our science teachers picked up on it, where students are put together and they're given spaghetti and various supplies and a marshmallow, and they're given the challenge of building the highest and strongest structure with the marshmallow on top. And to have the teacher reach out to me with such great excitement and want to share that, I think really speaks volumes about some of the changes and some of the focus that's going on in the high school around our instructional shifts and really the desires to align 21st century learning. So I know that it really was very warming in my heart and really just brought to life all the things that we've been trying to work on. We also had the PTSA barbecue on Friday. It was a tremendous success. Yes, it was hot, but the students came out, they were hungry, they were eager to eat, and the staff really pitched in. But most importantly, our parents, some of which are with us tonight, really did an amazing job of providing so much for our community, and whether it was behind the grill or really out there encouraging students to just have a great time. It was a wonderful event, and it just constantly reminds me of everything that's so special and warm at the high school. And my wonderful partner and colleague, Deb Marinello, is going to talk a little bit more about some of the specifics of the opening.
Everyone knows how I hate the microphone. I really don't. I love it. I have the great pleasure of sharing with you one of the most important aspects of any school life, and that is our students. It's not just elementary or middle school or intermediate school that looks forward to students entering our hallways. It was a lonely place over the summer without our students, and the first day just reinforced what a thrill it is to be at Irvington High School. We kicked off our grade-level meetings last week with renewing our message of excellence at Irvington High School. Our theme is framed by the essential question, "How do students define their own personal excellence?" And what we presented to each group of students, and we adjusted it based on their grade level, was how do we use our dispositions, our 21st century skills, to achieve personal excellence? And we invited students to participate in a discussion with us on a mathematical equation. How does collaboration with your school, a connect to your school, plus effective communication and growing and learning how to be an effective communicator, equal a tremendous level of self-reliance, which is our goal for each and every one of our seniors as they graduate? To know yourself, to know who you are, to know your place in this world, and how do you bring that excitement to Irvington High School with you each and every day? We were joined by an exceptional group of students in each and every grade level, bringing such unique personal excellence. However they define that is our mission, to help students to define that for themselves. So I speak to you with great joy and pride that we have just such an opportunity to invite our high school students to join in this endeavor with us, and we look forward to sharing their successes with you and know that this is just the beginning for a wonderful school year. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and I wish I was there for that conversation, to hear that, and to hear students set those objectives and goals for themselves and to wonder what they each walked away from that conversation with in hearing their peers' remarks. So that's very touching, and thank you. Congratulations on a great opening. I want to invite Mr. McCormick just to say a few quick words regarding some new things in the athletic department.
Good evening. Thanks, Dr. Harrison. Yes, we had a few new things this year that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. First of all, if you haven't had a chance, the new campus gym floor is completed, and I think they did a phenomenal job. It's really, the upgrade is tremendous. The coaches have noticed, the students have noticed, and if you get a chance, I think it's a first-class-looking floor up at the campus gym. So we're excited about that. We've been up and running for a little longer than the school, although modified sports started yesterday. High school sports started back on August 18th, and as the theme of weather goes, it was very nice for those first two weeks, and as soon as we got back to school, it was hot as blazes. So one of the things that we have new this year is we have a full-time trainer, and she hit the ground running with the first days of sports, and she learned a lot about Irvington in those days. She was all over the place. She learned that we have a golf cart, but it really doesn't go all the way to Dows Lane unless you push it half the way. So she was all over our practices, but one of the key items that she was very involved in is impact testing, all the concussion testing for our high school athletes, which we got 250 done in the first three days of practices. So that was tremendous, to have her taking that on, leading the students through that. We also have had the benefit of working with Dr. Mark Hirsig, who is the director of neuropsychology over at Burke Brain Injury Unit, and he has been phenomenal with dedicating time to coming in and working with our trainer for additional assessments for the contact sports up at the high school. We have tested boys soccer, girls soccer, varsity and JV. We have tested field hockey, varsity and JV, as well as football. And those additional tests will help us to determine if somebody needs to be removed from a contest or when they are concussed. It gives us a better source of information. And already, in our first couple of soccer games, we have put that to test for the opposing team as well as our own. So he has been a tremendous asset, and we will continue to implement that as we go through the winter sports as well, doing some more of that. And the students have been great. He has complimented our coaches when he has done that testing, which requires one-on-one, sitting down for about five minutes and really going through a series of questions that we can then use on the sideline if we suspect a head injury when they come out of the game. So that's been wonderful. Going back to the heat, we have a heat index procedure, and as many of you know, this past weekend, we moved our football game from Saturday to Sunday. While other schools did not do that, we thought it was prudent to move it to Sunday. It was a much better environment. Unfortunately, there's already been a tragedy earlier this year with a football player out on Staten Island, so it has brought to light the fact that you really got to take into account the heat index and what our student athletes should be doing in the heat. So we've been working with our coaches, we have emphasized that, and we have taken steps to make sure our people are in the right environment. In addition to that, our soccer teams, both boys and girls, captains and coaches, attended a sportsmanship summit that was held by Section 1. It was led by referees, Section 1 officials, and other coaches. The captains thought it was tremendous, the coaches did. Soccer is a sport where they have a yellow card policy where there's ejections and the emphasis on sportsmanship. I think coming off the World Cup, everybody kind of saw what went on in the World Cup, and I think sometimes our players have to realize it's not the World Cup, it's high school. So sportsmanship was the key there. Our numbers are up. We have over about 250 student athletes involved in the high school, and as of today, we have about 155 student athletes involved in middle school sports. So everybody's up and running, they're looking forward to a tremendous season, and that's about it. Thanks.
Can I ask you a question? I was just curious about JV football, because we last heard at the end of the summer that there was going to be no program. I just didn't know.
So our numbers in JV football, and unfortunately, this is a common trend going around the county. Football numbers in general are down. There's a number of schools that have lost their JVs. If you talk to the recreation department, they used to have a 3rd and 4th and a 5th and 6th grade team. They have not had a 3rd, they are not fielding a 3rd, 4th grade team this year. So what we were able to do is go back kind of cyclical to where we were about 14 years ago, where we have a 7th, 8th, and 9th grade team, the modified alternative program with this device, where you can go and play against other schools who have the same type of setup. So you're matched up against schools with similar numbers. I'll go to a meeting on Thursday, and we'll put how many 7th graders, how many 8th graders, how many 9th graders up on a board, and we'll match up those schools who have like numbers and come up with a similar game schedule. So the 9th and 10th graders, 9th graders are going down, 10th graders are going up to varsity. We just didn't have the number to sustain a JV team this year, and we hope in the future, with those 40 new families coming in, they want to play football, but we'll see where it goes. The trend--
I want to buy some more lacrosse sticks.
That's all right. We need them, too. Is a little down in football for some of the reasons we talked about before.
Yeah, thanks.
Before we move on, I don't know whether it's been said before, but you brought up Dr. Hirsig's involvement. I'd just like to, you know, on behalf of myself and I believe the board and the administration, thank Dr. Hirsig for agreeing to work with us on this important initiative. Dr. Hirsig, I know, was raised in the area, but lives in Irvington now. His kids go to our schools, and, you know, for a guy who knows as much as he does about this area to volunteer his time for the benefit of all of our students, I think-- this area to volunteer his time for the benefit of all of our students, I think shows a lot from one of our fellow residents. I'd like to thank Dr. Hersig for what he's doing for the district.
Thanks, Bob.
On the topic of concussion, I did have a question, because I honestly, I know we talked about this, I can't remember. Were we planning to roll out over time baselining everybody in the schools?
We actually have a meeting, already the question was, are we planning on rolling out baseline testing for everybody? And so we actually have a meeting scheduled, I'm thinking, next week as a follow-up to go back and evaluate what this increased testing impact has been at this point in time. We would love the opportunity to begin to expand basic impact testing for all of the students at the secondary level, if feasible, and continue to grow. Our concerns in how we expanded our protocols this year was truly about managing it, having enough manpower, expertise to be able to do it, and to be able to access our student athletes. So, you know, the expansion was that all of our students, high school athletes, received the impact testing, contact sports received the supplemental testing. So we would love that opportunity to begin to expand the supplemental testing on all student athletes, and then eventually hit our middle school student athletes, and then the conversation is, when we're talking kind of pie in the sky, to begin to extend that assessment to everybody at the secondary level, and who knows, maybe go down to lower grades as well. But really, the challenge is the logistics around being able to do it. We had some great planning sessions with Dr. Hersig, Dr. Segler, our school physician, as well as the athletic trainers, who've been excellent in developing the plan that we rolled out now. But now we're going to step back and evaluate to see what we can do to broaden that in years to come.
So I guess you're saying possibly in the future, but there's not a timeline to rolling it out yet.
No, we're not there yet. We have yet to evaluate everything that went on this fall. And as I said, we have a meeting within the next two weeks to go back and assess that and see what we need to do for our next steps. But I think we've made some tremendous strides. And Dr. Hersig, being such an expert and nationally known, he has said that he has not seen any high schools, public school districts that are doing anything like we're doing. So it's something that we're very proud of and taking those extra steps to ensure that our students are safe. But with that said, just a couple other additional remarks. I'd like to thank my colleagues for a tremendous start to the school year, for your talent, your passion, your enthusiasm that made it all possible. Of course, to Raina and Beverly for everything that you've done to help launch a great school year. We certainly are very pleased with the great success that we've had. And there seems to be such a positive spirit, such a sense of community across the district in each of the schools. And so we're, I'm putting this on our Facebook page today, we posted something just a little different, inviting people to share their back-to-school photos. And we're going to create back-to-school photo albums for people to submit their photos if they're interested to send in a photo of their child, their children, family photos on the first day of school, getting on the bus, that breakfast, whatever the case may be. We created an email address, openingday@irvingtonschools.org. We asked that folks submit their photos by the end of the day, next Tuesday, and our objective is to try to get this new photo gallery up and running by the end of next week. So it's on Facebook, we'll put it in this week and hope we get some takers, because there's a tremendous sense of community, and we want to get everybody involved, and we want to see those smiling faces on the first day. Also like to just remind everybody that we do have our bond forums coming up for the bond vote, which is on October 7th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in Main Street School. Our first forum will be a little bit of a different structure and in a fair environment. It'll either be in the CPR or right outside in the library. I will give a brief introductory PowerPoint presentation. The board will be present to answer and field questions. Then we're going to have a series of stations set up around the room, where we're going to have our professional team present. Beverly will be able to answer questions related to finance. Our architects and engineers will be on site to answer any questions they may have. Mr. McCormick will be here to answer questions that may come up related to the athletic programming. We hope that it'll be an informative event. Would also like to draw folks' attention to our website, where we have our bond newsletter posted, which was mailed to all the residents of our school community, and an informative video that we put together for a similar purpose. As always, we're open to any questions or comments at bondquestions@irvingtonschools.org. Creating a lot of new email addresses this year. So we certainly look forward to seeing folks on Monday evening. We have other events that are posted on the website as well, so we hope to see members of the community. I'd like to invite Dr. Core to share a few words on some APPR updates for the 1415 school year. So Raina?
Back in June, we received a letter. Every school district received a letter reflecting the pressure that the state is feeling around APPR and Common Core. So as a result of a lot of the parent forums that you've seen, they were on the news last year, the state is now, I'm going to say backing off a little bit on some of the more stringent guidelines that they originally put out around APPR and testing of students, especially K-2 students. So the state is now, basically has prohibited the standardized assessment of early childhood students, and they are now coming back to us to say, so we know you have an APPR, and we know that you've set it up a certain way, but we want to give you flexibility in how you do that, and we are encouraging all school districts to not over-assess students. So I would say the complication of that was how long it takes to get your APPR approved and all the changes that you have to go through and all the legal ease that goes into it that they ask you to change. So fortunately for us, I think we've been very careful and thoughtful in our approach. So whereas some school districts three years ago purchased a standardized assessment, a lot of people, a tool called NEA, we did not do that. We've been proactive in really thinking through what makes sense. One of the changes that we will shift to is certainly in first and second grade, we're looking at trying to move to using more historical data. So in other words, if we give some type of assessment at the end of first grade or second grade, we would use that at the beginning of the year as our starting data. So your end-of-year data becomes your starting year data. So does that make sense? So the state has asked every district to review their own APPR plan to determine if there are places where you could now have less assessment or fewer assessments. So we're actively having those conversations. You know, Randy, Meg, and I have already started to talk about what are the other options. Today, we met with the kindergarten teachers actually to talk about, you know, what will our data be? We don't have any historical data on our kindergartners, so what makes sense and what's reasonable? So this is definitely a shift in thinking for the state. I would remind everybody that this really has nothing to do with Common Core, even though it's a reflection of the outcry from parents about Common Core. This is not about Common Core. This is about the APPR, it's about evaluation, and it's about the mandates around assessments of students to be used for APPR.
I'm sorry, but the thing that strikes me about this, has the School Board Association or anyone really now say to the, because there's been a lot of changes on both the Common Core and the APPR rules. All school districts, including us, have spent a lot of money in time and in actual cash to comply with whatever it is, and the ball keeps changing on us, the hurdle keeps changing. Has there been an outcry started to say, you know, what's going on here?
From what I've seen from my lines and seen what the different, whether it's professional organizations or groups such as school boards, I don't think anyone stepped back and looked at the big picture like that yet. I think people are seeing lots of little victories and seeing legislators dance and react to this, and are looking for the broader movement, I think, of looking at, some people are looking for the repeal of the Common Core, or modifications to the implementation, or ultimately the park assessments. There's been conversation along the way about the state needing to step forward and provide more funding, of course. But I have not seen the argument, Mr. Greidos, that reflects your observation, which is absolutely accurate, because as Dr. Core indicated, you know, these modifications take time, take money to go back and redo and adjust what our practices are. And all of these efforts in the modifications, where there may certainly be some benefits for students along the way, continues to slow down our progress. And that we're changing focus and taking teachers' time away from enhancing their curricula, from enhancing their practice and their craft and delivering instruction, there's, I think, some human cost here as well and opportunity to our children, which is concerning. So there's many advocacy efforts that are alive right now. I don't think any of them are married around that point yet. So, and then I guess just finally, you know, the school year, we know certainly among us will stay tied into the calendars. We have all of our open houses over the next couple of weeks, starting with Dow's Lane tomorrow night. Sporting events are underway, music on our society, induction at the middle school coming up. So a lot of exciting events, so please stay tuned in to the school and district calendar. Follow this week, follow Facebook, like us on Facebook. We're almost 600 likes, which we're proud of. But there's so many great things going on in our schools, and your children are doing so many fabulous things, so please stay dialed in, continue to be supportive, because we appreciate seeing you at all these great events. Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, so we move on to comments from the members of the community. Just want to remind people that this is for topics that are going to appear on the agenda tonight.
Can I ask a question? I actually had two questions for Artie, and I see he's going to scoot away.
Okay, a little bit out of order, all right.
I'm sorry, but they got to ask their questions, and then Dr. Harrison-
Are these questions that we need to ask tonight?
Oh, you know what? That's true. Go back.
Right, okay.
Sorry. Actually, one of them should be a public question.
Okay.
My apologies.
Artie, you're not to leave.
Oh.
Please, go to the mic.
Regarding the middle school, are any of the teams at the middle school level going to get the impact test?
That's not something we had planned on doing, just based on what we had talked about before. One of the things that I think Dr. Hersig even talked about is the middle school tests, even looking at middle school students, just in terms of brain development, I think one of the things they look at is, is it too early to get a real baseline on them? So that's still something we'll probably talk about when we meet again in two weeks. So not for the fall, but moving forward, maybe it's something we can implement.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies.
Actually, the eighth graders, or a few who are playing up at the high school, have been impacted because they're playing-
Right. I had assumed if they were on a JV team that they were-
They were impacted.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so back to comments from the community for items that appear on the agenda. Since we only have two members of the community, I'll assume that we're going to pass on this one, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. So first, we have a vote to approve the consent agenda, rather, motion to approve the consent agenda, and then we vote on the consent agenda. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So the first item is the Board of Education meeting minutes, which we can vote on later. Presumably, we are going to have a short discussion now about the item number 6.2 on Bring Your Own Device, the policy that we have been working on since July 1st, and prior to that, the policy committee worked on preparing the language, and we have continued to make edits on this particular policy over the last several board meetings, because it's important, it's new, and it's based on a regulation from the state. But it also will help clarify exactly what students can bring to school and the age of those students and what's appropriate and what's not. So we are at the editing stage and then the approval stage. This is the clean copy, I presume?
This is the clean copy.
Right.
Does this include some of the-
So this includes-
John's comment?
Yes.
And Maria's, and, right.
So what you see before you is inclusive of all the feedback that's been received so far. So based upon our last meeting in July, when we had a spirited conversation on the subject, Mr. Greidos and Mr. Montgomery, as members of this year's policy committee, spent some time performing some edits that were sent around for the board to review in advance of this evening. So what you see before you represents the edits that came from the policy committee attempting to integrate the conversation that occurred back in July. So certainly, there's some additions here, primarily, I should probably stand up, it'll be easier to manipulate this.
So there was language, and Mr. Greidos, I think you can speak to some of the language work that you did, and then we can, these areas through here were items in particular that Mr. Montgomery suggested, I believe.
Yeah, I think the crack I took at the language was really just to tie in and make at least a little clearer, not only what we were restricting, but, you know, the breadth of what a disruptive use could be. There was comments, mainly we looked at the language initially, that really, at least the initial language really didn't define disruptive use, and we talked a lot about the fact that you really can't say everything that would be disruptive use, but at least it needed to be clear as it relates to the use of PEDs. So I think that mainly my comments that I made were more, I would say, cleaning up and tightening the language than anything overly substantive.
I mean, my overall feeling of the policy is it's a hard thing, like, thank you for drafting this, because I think it's a hard thing to get anyone's hands around. But I also think, kind of over time, I think it'll, kind of, certain things will become more obvious as we're living with it. I'm sure we'll probably, I expect we would see this maybe even once or twice during this year to make a few changes to.
The only thing I would add, and I don't see here, and it may have been a comment you made, that I-
I may, yeah, I was going, I have one comment.
Yeah, I agree with it, where it says the board does not believe that the use of PEDs. I do think that, I think your comment was, at this time, or currently should be, or something like that.
Well, I would say, at this time, the use is not permitted in earlier grades, because I think it's taken out of context to say, I mean, the board does not believe the use of PEDs should be permitted in earlier grades. I certainly don't agree with that. I think there are certain instances where they might want an iPad or whatever, so that line-
Yeah, I'd say it another way, regardless of what the school board might think, it really doesn't matter.
Right.
It matters what the educators think.
Right. But I would say it's more like, at this time, you know, we don't think they should be permitted as an overall use, but certainly one-offs might be-
I actually would like to strike it totally, because we've never had that conversation.
That's fine, yeah. No, I think we need to have that conversation, yeah. I mean, I think they should take it out for now, and the sentence is still, I mean, the first sentence could stand alone.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That's what I talked about, John. It was his language, and I asked him if he felt strongly about the second part of the language. He said he would prefer if it was in there, but he would accept just having that first, because the first thing can stand alone.
I would be fine striking the language that everybody agrees. I don't think it adds anything.
I agree.
And to, I think, Mrs. Kerner's point, this is something that we're growing with, and we're going to learn from our experiences in doing so. We're going to come back, and we're going to have to make modifications here and there. As presented, as Dr. Core and Mr. Lubinski presented back in June, you know, when we look at our overall technology thinking plans, we have a need down the road to go wireless in our elementary schools. And at some point, we have to think about, well, we need to use that wireless, not just for when a teacher rolls a cart of devices into a classroom, or we need to unveil a whole slew of wireless devices for students to be able to take state assessments in the future, which are all going to be computer-based. If we're going to spend this money and this necessary infrastructure, we have to start to explore what those benefits will be, instructionally. We're not fully there yet. So we're going to have these experiences at the secondary level, and I think the board should expect that we're going to be having conversation as this year concludes through our different technology committees that we're formulating, the work that's going to be done this fall that Dr. Core and Mr. Lubinski are leading, that's going to help define what that will look like for us down the road.
Look, I mean, one other comment I had, I mean, I'm fine with the way it is, and I did ask this, and there was a reason, you know, I asked about kids who have IPs or 504s, and the only reason I asked isn't because I necessarily think, I know that always is outside of this world, but more from the perspective of, I'm just wondering, if parents are going to start reading this and then think, oh my God, my kid can't, more from the perspective, and maybe there's another way to do it in a handbook or whatever, but I just want to make it, I always find it's nice to make- I just want to make it, I always find it's, it's nice to make some of these a little more parent-friendly. So, like, if a parent were to read this, they might not automatically know that IEPs supersede the policy. So, I'm fine with it for now, but I would like to keep that in mind as we move forward or maybe do a handbook. So, any place that we could kind of make things clear on a kind of less legalese place and more colloquial, I think, would be useful.
Yeah, the only, the only way to do it here is to say, you know, where we define disruptive use, is to say that, you know, any use of a PED in conjunction with 504 or whatever shall not be deemed disruptive use. I mean, that's it. I think that's really what you're looking for.
It's up to you. If you want to add it, it's fine. If not, just, we need to keep that in mind.
I would say, along the way, in my experience, we've always had, and that, just not limited to my two-plus years in Irvington, you always had the conversation on the other side from parents and students who did not have 504s and IEPs that wanted to use devices and saying, well, how come some can on the other side and we can't? I just worry about tying that concept of looking at kids that have different needs into some character, category where we're saying disruptive use.
I think the point you made about the 504 or the IEP superseding this really is what it comes down to, right?
Yeah, and again, I'm fine with it not being here, but I think we just need to keep it in mind, that it might be confusing for a parent, because often, we say to them, oh, well, just refer to the policy. So, and again, there might be other things that go out that we could throw that in. I'm fine leaving this the way it is. It's not a problem.
All right, cool.
All right. Good. So, we're ready to approve this now.
Good?
Well, I, yeah, I'm good, but I do have two minor comments on the regulation, but that's the next thing. So.
On the regulation, what are you referring to?
What?
Oh, sorry.
Can I just say one, I have one question on the regulation. Under, I guess, page two, permissible uses, second paragraph on the bottom, where you talk about, students are not permitted to use any electronic device to record video media or take pictures. How do we handle kids taking pictures for yearbooks if that's the policy?
Where is that?
Yeah.
Is this the paragraph this is current?
Is that, you're saying, I mean, because they don't usually, you know, usually have people photographing.
...............
Here it is. It's page three. You're not going to have it.
I mean, I-
Can you just say, except, except in connection with approved student activities, students are not permitted to use any electronic device to record audio or video media? Just carve it out?
Somehow, if you could just carve something out, yeah. Just because otherwise, it seems, it just seems counter, like, you're going to have kids that are taking pictures for the yearbook and you're like, this policy says you can't do that. I mean, they will-
Well, and you have other events that are videotaped.
Right.
Yeah.
I would just, honestly, I think, I think, you know, instead of trying to limit the world, because you never know when you're going to be doing it, I'd say, except in connection with-
With school-sponsored events?
With school, well, school-sponsored events or permitted, you know, activities.
Commended activities.
Something like that.
I think-
You know, I would actually put it at the beginning of the sentence, Chris, only because now it looks like it's relating to the permission as opposed to the use, which is what we want to deal with. Sorry to get all lawyerly on you, but I think-
That's why you're on the policy.
That's why I'm on.
It's like second nature to you.
It is.
We're like, hmm.
It's what I do. That works. Right?
Of, of.
Yeah.
Could be of instead of for, or?
Of. Of, yeah, of.
Yeah, that's a good clue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good catch, Robin.
Yeah, I suppose. Makes sense. All righty.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody have any other comments on any other items in the consent agenda?
No.
What is, I don't think so, but what does this go through again?
This goes through seven and eight.
And nine?
This doesn't-
Seven, eight, nine. And nine.
Nine, nine. Not goal development. Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. So, now, can I have a vote to approve the consent agenda? All in favor?
With the resolution-
With the resolution, well, everything-
Do you need a most?
As revised.
Yeah, as revised, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who carried, who did the motion?
The motion was earlier, and that was, I don't remember who it was.
I think I-
Maria.
Yeah, she made the motion. I seconded.
Okay. So, we are now on to our discussion. While I'm, we have a break here, I'd like to thank the IEF for the grant that we just accepted in the consent agenda. That's the Star Lab amount of $2,250. Thank you, as always, to the Irvington Board of Education Fund. I mean, thank you to the IEF. That's not a real entity. So, we're now on to the discussion part of our, presentation part of our meeting tonight, and that would be our goal development for 2014-15. We are very early in this process. We have had essentially one brief discussion in our last meeting, or two meetings ago, because I wasn't here in our last meeting. The objective is to get these goals for 2014-15 sort of ironed out by the end of the month or early October. We have two more meetings this month, so we have a fighting chance of doing that. We have some edits that we are proposing for consideration tonight. But, Chris, you're going to, it looks like you're going to begin with a clean copy. Is that right?
A clean copy, and I have the edited version, if you'd prefer to see that as well, from where we started.
I think it's a good idea to start with that, just to remind people where we were. It's a little messy, but it's red. It's, the edits are in red, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
So, I guess, just to span upon what Mr. Whitney had indicated, when we started our conversation a month ago, we started by reviewing the 14, 15, or 13, 14 goals. And there was interest among the board members to contemplate how we could use that as a base document and work from that, making adjustments, removing some items, building upon some existing items, to kind of refine what our focus has been and continue, you know, the progress that we've had in some of these areas. So, with that said, I took the, my notes from the previous discussion and attempted to make some revisions based upon comments and discussion that we shared that evening. So, in doing so, and I certainly don't want to go through and read what you've already read, but you can see there was some simple wordsmithing and attempt to kind of blend a few of the goals, statements that were in place before, and to create some new objectives. You'll see there's a couple areas that we're identifying that we need to continue to do more work. This is, I think, the discussion here will be important. So, for example, if we look at either the technology objective or the guidance goal that's underlined, continue to build a rich preparedness program. Those are areas where there's ongoing work, where progress has been made, significant progress, I might say. But we know there's still a ways to go. There's a lot of work before us. And so, we don't want to turn our back on that. But at the same time, I think we need to kind of be careful in our approach to not undermine the efforts that are underway and counteract the momentum that may be in place in each of those areas. So, this is, as it speaks to the instructional goal, the curriculum goal, we struck the facilities goal, and there was conversation and interest, and I use the term infrastructure because I see policy as an infrastructure for our district. We have a massive undertaking that we're going to be launching in probably the next month related to policy. Not only Mr. Greidos, you'll be thrilled to hear, and Mr. Montgomery will, that this week, I'm working on a few policies that we have to tackle before we get to the big project. But we're looking at reviewing our entire policy manual, which we know will take approximately 18 to 24 months. So, that's going to be a massive undertaking and not only a commitment for the Policy Committee and the administration that'll be working with them, but for the entire board, that's going to have to be on a regular discipline basis to review and discuss policy.
Hopefully, after my tenure on this board is well over.
But with that, it's such a commitment, it's worth acknowledging and identifying as a goal. And then, we are maintaining our commitments of long-range planning. Mr. Whitney and Mr. Montgomery and I have already had one meeting to initiate our efforts and look forward to reporting out some thinking and some projected plans on an upcoming meeting later this month. But there would seem to be some consensus that the language here that we had from 13, 14, could sound a little in 14, 15. So, it looks a little convoluted, but you can see the adjustments that were made. And then, we do have a clean copy. Mr. Whitney, would you like to?
Yeah, let's just talk this through, kind of, the spirit of the word changes. So, we start with the instruction goal, a small word change, but the implication is that we have, we worked last year to establish those high expectations and accountability. This year, we're maintaining, I suppose it could be debated as to whether or not the establishment of those high expectations was purely quantifiable or just in tone, but let's go with the idea of maintaining for the moment, but we can debate that. In the curriculum goal, again, the similar thing, where we are developing and maintaining curricula to promote academic excellence as opposed to enhancing the curricula. So, in fact, that's even more specific than enhancing, because we're saying we're going to develop curricula as well as maintaining it. And I think, I'm not going to try to characterize the rest of those, Chris. They seem sort of too specific for me to do right now, but perhaps you could kind of describe what, the kind of general changes that you were recommending there.
So, I think we're looking at, trying to blend some language from objectives that were there in previous years or last year. So, we're looking at kind of breaking out what you see in the bold, identifying opportunities, expanding and enrich curriculum. And then, to, we're, in the past, you see the language that was struck, that would focus, it was, well, alignment to the common core. Well, we recognize that we're continuing to work on that path, but it's much bigger than that, because the work that Dr. Core and principals are leading is deeper. It's about approving curriculum. It's about enhancing instruction. So, it's well beyond the common core. So, when we think about, you know, that idea of higher standards and that was there before, that's inherent in the work that we're doing today. So, to me, it's naming the work that we're doing in much, in a much more specific manner than we have done in the past.
Can I just, one comment that I hadn't thought of before tonight was that understanding by design and Rubicon Atlas, while being something that we know now on the board, at least somewhat, those words are going to mean nothing to people in the community who are looking at our district goals, and these really are as much about communicating to our people in the community about what we're planning to do. So, I think we need to have a different way of expressing that. I mean, because obviously, continuing to revise the curricula, that makes sense. And then, I think we have to say, you know, why we're doing that. The understanding by design and the Rubicon Atlas seems more like the how as opposed to what? I don't, do other people-
I, I, I mean, I have some bigger broad strokes comments on these goals. I mean, we can go through and go through this now, but, yeah, I mean, I don't think understanding by design and Rubicon Atlas belong in the district goals.
Right.
I mean, that's just, you know-
Two in the week.
-a choice as to how you're going to get to where the goal ultimately is.
Say instructional design and curriculum mapping. Those would be the generic terms.
That, that's fine. I still, right, I feel the same way. I don't, I don't view curriculum, frankly, if the goal of our district is to map out our curriculum, then I think we are falling way short of where we need to go. I think we need to, our goal needs to academic excellence. I mean, I pulled goals from all these other schools in Westchester, and, I mean, nobody's goal is that they're going to map out a curriculum. I don't see how, that's a little process to me, and that, just me. I mean, I don't view that as a goal. I view that as, that's one of the steps that you guys are taking to improve the, you know, the overall academic experience. But, I, I mean, to me, that's, you know, it's, I guess we have this discussion a lot, but that's very, that's your day-to-day job, is like, mapping out a curriculum, you know, for the teachers. And I view that as part of the everyday. And to me, that should not be a goal, because I think the goal should be, you know, to, you know, like, here, this is Edgemont, maintain and enrich an excellent education. I mean, the goal should be up here-
Can you finish that? Can you just finish with, what they wrote, because I've just-
Oh, I mean, I'll read you a few of them. Just, I was just curious, what other people came out. And I, they're, they're a little more high-reaching.
And do they change their goals every year? That would be an interesting question.
It looks like they do. Most of them are dated. But, but then again, the one, the one thing I couldn't find out, which, which impacts, I think, certainly my thinking, is if we're using goals to then kind of review how we, you know, our success or not our success, then, then your goals might be structured differently. Based on the goals they're using, I don't think they're sitting there then kind of talking to their administration about, did you achieve these or not? They're more high-reaching over, like, okay, here's a few. Like, Scarsdale, I was shocked. I mean, their goals are very-
I read them, yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
Emphasize the development of mind and spirit to inspire a love of learning. Like, I never would have crossed my-
So, are you, so are you suggesting that we be more generic?
Well, I guess-
Because that's what you're reading from-
Okay, yes. And some of them, yes. Like, for example, the Rubicon Atlas and the understanding by design seems way too specific, especially in light of, I see where everybody else is. It seems like we should, you know, our goal needs to be about, you know, academic excellence and pushing the curriculum forward.
But, but that is the goal, right?
No, I know, but I'm saying, even, you know, and it's one thing if we're going to develop action plans under the goal, you know, action items, in which case, then that's fine, but let's do, I mean, to me, also, I, you know, I would say our possession-
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you. I just think that if, if you're going to follow Edgemont or Scarsdale, really, the three goals are the first line under each goal.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think, honestly, I'd probably want to go back. I'm just kind of going through this now.
What you mean, Bob, just to be clear?
You're saying-
The first line under you.
You're saying, he's saying, we maintain high ex, I think, but I think our instructional goal could be a little more reaching than just maintain. I, I, I mean, to me, a goal is not maintain. That's, you've achieved it. Your goal is going to be how you're going to make it better. That's how I view goals. I mean, I-
Yeah, I mean, Edgemont, just looking at what you have here, they have maintain and enrich. I mean, I-
I know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I want to do these. I'm just saying I thought it interesting. And like, you know, Tabacle was, how can, they asked, they didn't have goals. They had two strategic questions, which I thought was interesting. And the second one is, I like, like, how can the district ensure that all students think deeply, support problem-solving skills, and actively participate in their learning and knowledge? And then, I guess, from there, I didn't dig through. I guess, from there, there might be things more on the, kind of, on a secondary level.
I think that one of the things is that what we don't know is, are these goals that change, or are they goals that are really reflective of their strategic or long-term planning?
Right.
That clearly-
Tabacle was, I don't think, changes. Edgemonts and Scarsdales are dated. So, they're like-
What are their dates?
2013, 14.
Okay.
You know, so I'm assuming that they probably do revisit them.
Or, but we don't know if they've just adopted what they-
Correct.
Did the prior year.
Correct. I did not look for strokes. But again, I, I mean, I almost, in kind of rereading this, and it's funny, when we talked about it at the end of the year, it was like, oh, that's a good idea. But in rereading it, I, I, I mean, it's a board discussion. I think, you know, what are we using these goals for and what do we want to communicate with them? And again, if we're really using them to push the envelope and drive academic excellence, then, to me, I think I'd like them a little more high-reaching. You know, if we're using them to identify, for example, the policy, that we're redoing the policy, I certainly wouldn't be a goal for me. I mean, I think it's great and I think it has to be done. But if you're going to step back and say, what do you hope to accomplish as the Irvington School District, my number-one goal isn't going to be like, you know, rewriting all the policies. It's going to be more about, like, you know, the other issues or long-range planning is kind of along the lines of what I'm thinking. The policy thing is a little bit more operational to me.
I think the thing is with these goals is that we're trying to tell the community and our, and our staff what we're working on this year as an organization. So, there is a timeliness to it.
Right.
So, if it's too high-minded, then it seems like there's no timeliness to it.
Well, I mean, and this is, this is new, and I'm, I mean, I'm literally just thinking of this as we're talking, but-
Yeah, that's fine. What we're talking about.
I mean, it seems-
What we're talking about.
I mean, it seems, the interesting thing to me is that everyone seems to have a different cut at how they do this and how they interpret it. And, you know, yes, we've always had these goals, but as I was thinking about it, kind of to what you're saying, it seems like maybe there's another way that, maybe there is levels that we have to do. I mean, maybe there's overarching goals and then maybe underneath that, there's places where the policy committee fits. And I mean, maybe we need to come up with our own strategic questions or call them something else instead of just doing the same thing we've always done. There's nothing to say that we have to do it this way, is what I'm saying.
If I can jump, please. A lot has been said and I feel that I want to respond to some of your thinking. But sitting back, standing here and watching this evolve and having gone through this process now a couple of times with the board, I kind of feel like in some ways where the conversation's coming almost full circle to where we were. And I think we started off in making our initial sets of goals where we were much more open-ended. We were making more generic lofty statements, I think, in some of our original conversations going back a year or two ago. And then as we went through process last year, the objective was to become more specific and want to name the specific things that were going to be done. So that's when we started to looking at, well, so what are we doing in and around curriculum? So we worked to begin to name the curriculum work, the technology work, the guidance work. There were specific deliverables that we were looking for last year. So the conversation is a little different and kind of has taken us back to some places that we may have been before, but with different purpose. You know, I think some of the comments with respect to, you know, where does this fit into the process? And I think we'll have a better sense of what that looks like after we go through a long-range planning process because we'll have some of those overarching objectives and goals that I think will help redefine what this process looks like for us when we're having this conversation a year from now, two years from now. I think that will shape our thinking quite a bit and it will set those lofty objectives. And there may be a natural progression to see what the district goals look like. The one thing that I do want to say, and I respect the thoughts that, you know, there's certain work that you do that's just a part of the responsibility of the job. So when we talk about whether it's curriculum mapping and instructional design or something in a totally different arena and looking at policy, that's work that you just do. But at the same time, we can't undermine the amount of focus that has to go into that work. And where policy is something that is more nuts and bolts and going through it and it's time spent in research, the other work related to curriculum and instruction, that is changing how people think and how people work. And it requires an immense amount of time, focus, energy, professional learning, that it's a lot bigger. And maybe it is an objective that sits beneath the first goal statement about developing and maintaining curricula and doesn't stand alone, but I think it's important that we kind of honor the focus and what really goes into that. It's just not sitting down and typing a document.
So I'm going to go from there to ask a question. So I think rather than trying to get real specific and start editing this document, I think what we should be asking ourselves is how specific do we want to be in this document? How, or how generic, not generic, but how nonspecific?
Aspirational?
Yeah, yeah. Or how, I think it's nonspecific, how general do we want to be? That it could still be language that we own as a district that is aspirational, but it's just not going to be super-specific. Because when you get more aspirational, then in effect, you're talking about a goal that very likely will not be achieved in its entirety this year. That's the thing that we have to think about. Do we want goals that are truly achievable?
And I think that's where we ended up, I guess at least at the end of last year, when we got specific because there was a concern that based upon, you know, if we were going to do, you know, a Scarsdale thing, here's our five sentences and we have three here, develop and maintain curricula to promote academic excellence. We wanted something that we could judge the district by and the administration by to say, well, have you met that or have you not? Whereas when you just have one lofty goal that, you know, is subject to every individual's interpretation of what it means to have academic excellence, you're never going to be able to sit back and rationally and specifically, you know, determine whether that's moved, you know, the administration has met that goal. So I sort of fall down in wanting it to be a little bit more, I'm happy to go either way, honestly, but I fall down more on the specifics than you could judge it.
Can I just add on to what you're saying? I think this is a very good discussion to have because I actually did think that we went from the more broader to kind of pinpointing some of what we wanted specifically addressed because just even, not even the whole community, the five board members, I think we each have different priorities. And I guess at the end of the year, when we look at, let's say we look at the curriculum goal, well, I might look at that and say, hmm, I don't think this was achieved because this and this wasn't addressed. But the district and the administration, you know, made strides in other way. I think it's, I think if you don't prioritize or identify what specifically we're talking about, then I think it leads it up to interpretation whether or not we've achieved those goals or not.
And I, and that's why, and I go back to something I said in the beginning, a couple thoughts. I am beginning to think that the goals are really not there to judge, those are action items. I mean, it seems like the goals are really more about the heart and soul of where the district wants to be. And they, and I think I was definitely wanted more action items last year, but now I'm kind of taking a step back. And this is why I said, I think maybe we need to come up with another document that focuses more on some action items, but I think really the goals are the goals. I mean, they're seriously, as a district, as I said, and I keep using policy, but, you know, if you were kind of looking through and reading and you came to Irvington, you're like, their goal is that they're redoing their policy manual? And everybody else's goal is about educating their child or, you know, college, I mean, it's like-
But to be fair, that we do have those other things in here.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I actually, and on the same token, I do want more action items. I actually feel like these were almost too broad in terms of, like what you're saying, prioritizing, but I'm not sure that they belong in the goals. I actually think that district goals need to be lofty and reaching and then they're neat, and again, they did strategic questions, they didn't do goals. I don't know why we can't then come up with something else that maybe lists out a few more kind of specifics as in, you know, deliverables or action items that we're looking for.
I think when you're-
Maybe not, I mean, I'm just suggesting this.
When you're comparing ourselves to other districts, you have to remember the one thing is that we've never done any kind of long-range goal definition, nothing, or not in 10 years, right? So that is what we will be doing this fall. So by January 1st of this year, we will have some language that sounds like those other districts.
Right.
But I'm just saying we will have that. And then the question is, should we have goals that are more specific to 1415?
Right, but actually to Chris's point, you know, just because some thing's taking a lot of time to do doesn't automatically to me mean that it goes on our district goals. I mean, I just, I don't see those two as being married. I think, as I said, there's some things that we do and, and it's, you know, it's hard and it's going to take a long time, but it's just part and parcel with the fabric of the school district and what we have to do. And I think the goals really should be above and beyond that. And that's me. I mean, I really would like to hear John's thoughts also, obviously, before we decide what we're going to do.
Yeah, we're not.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying so-
Trying to give him directions so that we-
I'm just viewing, and it might just be that now as I took a read over this, I kind of felt like, you know, on one hand, yes, we were asking for action plans, absolutely agree, we went one way, we went another way, but now I'm kind of taking a step back and saying, in one hand, I don't think this should be where we ask for action plans. And it doesn't mean they shouldn't be somewhere else, though, like action items. It seems a little too specific to recognize things that we spend time on is not the same as a goal to me. So I don't know. I really think as I read over kind of where we were and where they were drafted to, again, that to me, it doesn't really get to the heart of where we want to be. It just, it reflects almost a combination of things, like a few long-term goals, a few things about, you know, what you guys are prioritizing is important this year. But it almost seems like we're getting some of both in there and we're trying to push it under one document. And I'm almost wondering if they go under one document. Because if we're going to start doing just things that take time, that are important, then I want to take a step back and really think that through because then maybe there's other things that I think we should be spending more time on that we're not. I mean, this, you know, I just viewed it as, as I read through it, I found it a little inconsistent about some were lofty and some were just kind of going through about what we're doing.
I think a lot of different things you've said and a couple of things that really stand out to me, you know, in looking at where we want to be and what this document means. And we're looking at, you know, reviews, I use the word, and then Phil and a couple others have used the word aspirational. So you want something that's going to drive and motivate work, that's going to tell a story about who we are, what we believe in, the type of work that we're doing. Then there's that other side of it of hearing that accountability measures and how we're measuring progress in the district to look at how you're going to evaluate your superintendent. And, you know, maybe there's a marriage of the two and maybe there isn't. If we're solely focusing on wanting this to be tied towards evaluation, maybe we need to have a different conversation in and around evaluation and what those measures of success look like. Because as you've said, we've kind of evolved and we've gone different places. I agree, I think the strategic planning process is going to help define a lot of this from us, but we're not there yet and we need this work now to kind of guide some of the things that we're going to do for that aspirational point and for the accountability. But there's some other things that are out there that we have to think about. You know, we're going to define things for ourselves as we move forward this fall. We've talked about the theories of action, the work that we've done as a school district with teachers and administrators and kind of coming up with beliefs about what we believe as an educational community, the people that are actually delivering the education on a daily basis. So I think it's important to kind of step back and reflect on that a little bit because that is a belief system that is in place and it grew out of what people were thinking in our schools. And we've talked about that a few times. I presented it almost a year ago and have referenced it multiple times since. So I think there's a place to reflect on that work as well.
Yeah, but to me, they're two different things. I mean, this is, as a board, we're asked to figure out what the district's goals are. And now you're saying, well, because I've introduced this multiple times, it's a goal. And I'm like, no, I don't, I just view it as different. I think as a board, we're up here deciding what the goals are going to be. And then when you come up with, well, here's one way that I'm going to reach that goal, that's a different conversation than setting the goal. And just because that's the direction that you guys have decided to go and you've introduced that a few times, doesn't necessarily mean that it becomes part of our lofty goal. To me, I'm just saying, I think they're different levels.
Can I, can I, can I just stop this for a second? Because what we're having now is a philosophical debate.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I think what we should just say as a board, do we want to have broader goals that may not be applicable directly to this year? They may actually apply to multiple years. When we met in our executive retreat with whoever that was who was with us, he actually said, and this would be our facilitator in our executive retreat, he actually said, you know, you don't have to redo your goals every year. You can let your goals roll over from one year to the next because they may still be applicable. And I think that's generally what you're arguing for, although I'm not going to hold you to exactly what I just said, but you're just, you're talking about more general goals that we still believe are true this year.
Right, but I'm also, and then I'm saying, sorry, but more work for everybody, but I do, I don't want to go away from the specifics and the action plans and deliverable, but I don't necessarily think they belong in this document.
They're a different thing altogether.
At this point in time. And again, yeah, I kind of felt like we did it one way, we did it another way, and then I kind of looked back to what our goals were last year. And, you know, the goal was a long-range planning goal and it's still a goal, we're rolling it over, which makes sense to me if it's overarching. But if it's really something that we want every year delivered, then it doesn't make sense. We failed. We didn't do it last year. I know we would have liked to, but it seems like the overarching goals are things that are going to be more longitudinal in nature and that the deliverables serve a different purpose. There are more shorter-term goals that we want to achieve by the end of the year. And I guess maybe the question is, what do we want out of these goals? Is it long-term, is it short-term?
I get your, I get, I get what you're saying, I guess, that I think we need to be consistent, though, if we're going to limit it and take more of an approach of doing sort of broad-brush goals. And I think when you really break it down, it is sort of the first four lines of each of those things, however you want to word them, then we need to be consistent and permit the administration to come up with their way of doing it. I think it's one thing, you know, we sort of wanted to get specific, you know, at least toward the end of last year and the year before about what the goals are so we could check the box to make sure things have happened. But I guess I'm wondering really what the end game is because, I mean, if all we're doing is breaking this into two documents, I mean, if that's all it is, it's fine, but I guess I'd hate to just, you know, agree on the four lofty goals and then, you know, spend, you know, six months arguing about what we all think needs to happen under each one of those things for the district to meet the lofty undefined goal. I mean, that's what I'm concerned about. You know, at least with this, we can say that, you know, there is a way to measure it. And maybe you're suggesting we go away from using the goals as a measurement tool.
I don't think goals should be a measurement tool.
Well, these aren't, because these aren't necessarily a measurement tool at all because-
I think that's where we're getting hung up.
These aren't the superintendent goals.
I think sometimes they are, is, and sometimes it isn't, and that's kind of bothering me. Like, I actually do feel like what you're saying, like, some of them were measurement tools and some of them weren't. And it's just, that's kind of making me uncomfortable.
I mean, honestly, I'd have, I'd have no problem personally in having each of those goals, if that's what, you know, the administration wants to suggest, be the, be the one-liners that other districts have done. I, you know, it's a lot easier.
I think if, because I understand what you're saying, Robin, and I think, having spent like years and years now developing exactly what you're saying, which is, how do you have those big broad statements that guide our thinking? And really, are those, they are lofty, but then what sits underneath them? And what's underneath them is how you operationalize that idea. And that changes from year to year or multiple years because you achieve it and you evolve and you grow and you build from it. So when you look at those theories of action that, you know, Chris is referring to, that's really what they are in that way. They're these broad statements that give us as the educators this way to say, where are we going? What are we really trying to do? And when we start to lose our way, well, wait a minute, let's read what we said we're going to be doing. And that broad statement guides our thinking and helps us develop those next steps. And it lets us cross off, when we're done curriculum mapping, take it off. It doesn't need to be underneath anymore. But what do we need to be doing now to continue growing in our goal? So I think if, and I'm not suggesting that you go back to those theories, but I think that was where we started, which is here's the theory and how do we make this, this all fits underneath it. So I understand what you're saying and so I don't know if there's value at some point in maybe if you wanted to review that again, if that would-
You lost me a little bit. I don't know what-
In other words, the document that we started with last year sounds like what you're sharing. So I guess I'm just saying, rather than starting from scratch-
I guess I don't remember offhand which document.
You have the theories of action document.
Right. I guess I'm just saying, rather than starting from scratch, because that's what all of this fits under, underneath. All this work fits there nicely. So I'm just suggesting that we have a document-
I'll go back and look at it. I haven't looked at it recently.
Just the language that you use because their if-then statements are a little bit-
Exactly.
Non-standard outside of the education world, so we-
Well, it's the same way that Robin said, you know, Scors, or Chapacua used questions.
Right.
Like, it doesn't have to be, and Phil, I'm not saying you have to do it that way. I'm just suggesting that may be a starting point that would be helpful.
I think that's again, we're just-
Go back and look at that.
District goals are different than, than like a strategic document that can be more comprehensive because your if-then statements aren't just for one year, they're more-
Right. They're goals, they're really goal statements. They're just written as if-then, but they're really what Robin's describing she's reading in other districts.
Yeah, I mean, like what you said, a strategic action plan might be the thing that we need to marry to this kind of lofty goals. I don't know, I really would like to hear John's thoughts in this discussion. So it's kind of, I know, I know. It would be, you know, I know we've thought a lot about goals and-
Could it be a combination of our district goals and the lofty goals, you know, our aspirational goals? And then when we develop the superintendent's goals, they're married to those goals and they're more action items? I mean, I kind of see the partnership there. What do you think?
What do you think?
I think there needs to be a balance in some sense too, because I'm still hearing the desire to want to name things here. So, you know, maybe a broad statements with objectives beneath them.
But isn't that what this is kind of?
I think we just have to go back and rework it, and we have to remove some of the deep specificity that maybe speaks to the work you're actually doing and try and bring it up a level so that it is not quite so specific. Now, Robin, I don't want to take away your desire to have the specifics, I just think the goal document as it...
I'm agreeing, I mean, I want specifics more than anyone, but again, like, to put the...
It's just a different document that they create.
We're going to use a process like the tri-states as a goal seems more operational. That's how we're going to achieve a goal, it's not the goal in itself.
But that's why I think that, and I don't want to play semantics because, but I see the bullet points under the goal, which is exactly what you said, which is the way we're going to achieve that. That's not the goal in and of itself.
So then you're saying the high arts and goal...
Yeah, like for instance, the first one is maintain high expectations and accountability for quality teaching in every classroom. There are no identifiable ways we're going to do that under there, it's a broad goal. Curriculum goal, develop and maintain curricula to promote academic excellence. And it goes into, well, which ways are we going to do that, examples of that. The goal is not the bullet point, the goal is the first thing in each.
So maybe what it is, is that we come up with the four, three, whatever, big goals that we like, and then we call it something else, come up with a subheading, and then we prioritize a few key action items underneath. Would that work?
Which I think this is what this is doing.
Right, maybe not, right, but I bet it, now that, if that's what we're doing, then, you know, it might be easier to focus and make sure that we're all aligned in terms of what the priorities are.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. The only thing I would add is that probably the college preparedness goal should be a separate goal as opposed to, I mean, it should have its own, because it seems like we have four, right, we have four goals.
Instructional... Yeah, I want to go through and think about it. If that's the direction, then I think that's easier, it's actually almost easier to go through and read this and come up with comments if we're deciding we're going to do like four goals and then a series of actions underneath, I think everyone can kind of go back and look at it.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I read it originally. I...
So when you're seeing about four goals, what are you seeing as the four?
I don't have the thing on me.
Well, the instructional, the curriculum, add a guidance, and I say, keep the long range. Those are four.
Well, I see technology also, I do, but maybe not, I mean, it's up for discussion, that's my priority.
True, that is up for discussion.
No, but I think that's absolutely right, I think those are your four goals, with the possibility of the technology.
Guidance, I see. I mean, and the question to me is my priorities, I'm looking at my priorities that I wrote down, and then some of them, I'd have to think about it in context of what we're talking now, because where does it fall on the, you know, high-low action? To me, it's like technology, academic excellence, which is a combination of curriculum and instruction. And, you know, guidance, which is a little more action-oriented, it's a little more, not as lofty in terms of general, but it's something that...
Could be, definitely could be.
Right, but I mean, you know, so those, that's kind of where I kind of took a step back and said, okay, where would I like to see us at the end of this year feel like we've kind of grown and moved and improved? And that's kind of where I came out.
So we will work with the four goals...
There are five.
Possibly five. I don't agree with the technology one, but...
Well, we could talk about that.
And that's fine, I mean, it's up for discussion, yeah.
Technology to me seems like it's part of curriculum.
That I kind of agree with you.
And it could be part of academic excellence, I think, but...
Right, right.
But any case, we will work with that and we'll kind of tighten up the language around some of the specifics and...
So we're still going to keep the specifics, it's not going to be four...
I'd call them something else, though. I mean, so I wouldn't, I would call, I personally would like a subheading on that, so if someone says, what are the district's goals, it would be the four goals.
We can structure it so in a way that's more, so it's more clear.
And I think it's also font size and the way it's presented, you know?
Yeah.
It's all about the font size.
Well, it's the way it's displayed.
Well, it's the way it's emphasized. As you're saying, let's emphasize our goals and then let's make it clear that these have specific things under each goal.
It's almost like goal and strategic action plan, almost, not that detailed, but almost, but...
Or maybe like a page with the four goals and then subsequent pages defining each goal with action items.
I think the creative use of heading would be...
We want to get that detailed on the action items because then that starts to get redundant with what we do.
No, they're not too detailed, but I don't know.
Because you guys go away and do your very detailed action plans.
I think we need to define what the, come down what the focus is. And what's interesting, and this isn't me trying to be argumentative, I'm trying to spur conversation, I've heard a lot of comments saying, well, that's what you're saying, but maybe my priority is. And when we're saying my, we need to be talking as one unit of five, and when we're saying that this is a priority, you should be asking yourself, why is this a priority? What is the demonstrated need for this to become an objective? So there should be an area that, there's a reason for growth. We recognize, you know, technology, we recognize guidance as areas where we've wanted to grow. So to have focused work in that in a couple of years makes sense, and to continue to have progress there makes sense. We know that we have a ton of work to do in curriculum instruction, but we need to, I think we need to ask ourselves why we're putting that out there and to make sure that we can step back and say, hey, we're doing this because, and that it's not because, you know, one person wants to do it and that we're horse trading there, it's because all of us see value in it. And I think there's more, it's more important for us to take a little more time to get it right than to compromise on something like this.
Right, and I actually think, given the sub-bullets, might be a good place to determine priorities, to outline priorities, board priorities and not individual priorities. Like, if it makes it on that list, it's clearly a board priority, is kind of what I'm thinking. I mean, I think, well, maybe hopefully I'll clarify as we go through with it.
Like I said, I just put that out there because it was...
No, I agree on the priorities. But I think, I mean, look, I feel like a couple times this year, I felt like we got hung up because we didn't have priorities. So it would be great if we could even, even if they're not perfect, to have some priorities for the coming year. So at least we've talked about it. And again, I feel the same way about this that I said about the other thing, which is, you know, I think if it comes January and we feel like we need to kind of add or delete or move something around, and there's nothing that says we can't do that, we can't shift the priorities based on what we're seeing in mid-year if we feel it's necessary. I wouldn't go in thinking that's what we want to do, but, you know.
All right, leave the horse to God. I think for now, especially since John's not here.
Okay.
All right, so we can close this business and move on to our calendar.
Yeah, so for the calendar, this is pretty comprehensive looking. You know, we had conversations two years ago about wanting to enrich our communications in and around the business of the school district in particular, to talk about curriculum and what we're doing, teaching and learning, and I think that was an objective that I think we made tremendous progress on last year. But to a point where we've discussed in this room to, that we're maybe a little overzealous and we pack too much into the year and too much into meetings. And we had conversation about trying to look at work sessions which are on the right-hand side of the paper or screen, and however you're looking at it, versus a regular meeting, and try to keep a lot of our presentations and discussions to the work session meetings because the agendas are lighter and we can spend more time getting into the meat of those issues. So in putting this together, we've tried to keep that in the back of our minds. And you can see in the top left, there's tonight and district goals, and I've made some notes for the board and how you're looking at time to discuss other things in executive sessions, so it's planning some other work to guide the board as well, so my evaluation is referenced there. I've also identified other dates here because it's just looking at a pure commitment of time to be able to appreciate that all of us are doing. I plugged in the two bond forms in September that are there, or actually three, because there's the one down on the left on the 29th as well. So we carried this forward, we look at September 16th, continuing discussion on district goals. The 23rd, again, district goals, but also trying to be optimistic to think that we're going to be close to ironing out details on goals to begin to add a discussion around hiring protocols and something that we've talked about in the last month or so. September 30th, we have a board retreat planned. The 7th is the bond referendum. October 14th, the annual student performance report. The adoption of district goals, I surely hope it happens well before that, but that is there. November 18th, looking at the tri-states world language review. December 15th, instructional design, which is really our intent here with the, for Reina, to introduce you to understanding by design, understand the work that's going on, to talk about the curriculum mapping, and to gain an appreciation of the initiative that's underway across the district. On January 13th, to report on our technology planning. We've talked about a week that's already scheduled in beginning of November where there's an enormous amount of focus being placed on mapping out our future pertains to technology. So having a conversation and discussion on that evening. You see, you jump into a variety of our presentations and discussions that we have to have around budget. February 3rd, this is a new date, so I would encourage the board that if you accept this calendar, we make modifications and accept it next week, that we could mark off February 3rd as a possible mid-year retreat time. And also, did something similar for the end of the year, and we could look to move that date as well, recognizing that we have challenges in finding those times if we don't put it on our calendars early. In February, on the 10th, you can see having calendar discussion and preparing to adopt a calendar for the next school year. And then at the end of the year, I think there's a lot of value in bringing the folks that started the meeting today back in to present and talk about work that's ongoing in the schools. So the community and the board is familiar with what they're leading and what the teachers are accomplishing and what the students are doing in each of the individual schools. I think it's important to see that voice and to have that start to become a regular dialogue, not just looking at the big picture things. You know, last year, we spent a lot of time talking about what our work was in the district and all the great things that Reina was leading. And now, let's break it away and let's see what's happening in individual schools because there's a lot of unique things happening there.
Chris, is there a logic though to maybe moving those up in the schedule so that maybe those would actually precede the budget discussion?
That is my question, yeah, exactly.
So that we would be able to have more insight about what's going on, but not from a budget perspective, but it might drive some thinking?
I mean, it seems backwards for us to be approving certain things and then then to come in after and say, well, here's where we're at with the curriculum. Shouldn't they be saying, here's where we're at with the curriculum, and then therefore it would be more obvious to everybody, the community too, why there are certain needs in the budget. Big needs, little needs.
You could essentially move the technology plan to, you know, December 2nd or something like that, and then maybe try to consolidate some of these building curricular presentations into a meeting or two in January.
My concern, what I'm going to talk about logistically, is we're going to find ourselves one in a position right back to where we were last year, and how much we can fit into a particular meeting is a worry. I think there's some benefit to be able, for our administrators and staff, as they would utilize them, to present on a body of work. When I think about, on the high school, for example, things that jump out to me would be to look at the work that's happened throughout the year in guidance with Emily and the new guidance chair and the work there, the WISE program, which, you know, when we look at trying to squeeze that in, in say, you know, December, you know, the program hasn't evolved at that point to be able to be able to fully report on its successes and challenges and impact on kids' lives. You know, I think we start the year with the conversations about, you know, everybody's optimistic, and I think it's great for them to turn around and say, hey, you know, we came in in September, we were excited, but look at what we've accomplished and look what our body of work has been. I saw it as an opportunity to close out the year.
Yeah, but you know, Chris, I mean, I think we've got to really focus on how do we move forward and how do we do it?
Excuse me?
Time goes quickly, as we all know, and you blink and you're in January, and then, oh my God, we're not going to have time to do anything. And I think, kind of to Phil's point, and maybe it's just two presentations, I mean, maybe they save some of the more qualitative things for the end of the year, and they focus on maybe some of the quantitative things or their needs earlier. Because I think it's very hard as a board to really get a sense from what the needs are and where the money priorities should be done, to not have that sense from the building view. And I think it would be very helpful for the board to have that, and I also think it'd be helpful for the community if we're going back and saying, we need more money, for them to have a sense of that before they're asked to vote on a budget, not after. But again, I recognize that some of the programs that they're doing, which are really important that we love to hear about, those can probably be made later. But I think, I think from a board perspective, I certainly would appreciate getting a little more information before we're asked to vote on things rather than later, because it makes it very difficult. I feel like then we're almost trying to build priorities for things that we don't have the breadth of information that's really out there. So I would ask to think about it a little bit maybe from a board perspective and not really, I know it's hard and I know that it's a short schedule and the year goes quickly and it's hard to get everything in, but from an information perspective as to what would benefit, you know, kind of the budget process, I think we've got to view it from that view.
Yep, yep.
And I would like to maybe start the conversation, I thought we were going to try to change the way the budget was presented and almost tighten it and not make it so detailed-oriented and break it up over, what, six, five different presentations? I mean, there are certain school districts that just present the budget in one meeting. And I think this community is a little bit more accustomed to do more detail than one meeting would allow, but maybe, and then we could add in some of the reports from the buildings on more of what their needs are...
That's what I think.
That we could, that has budgetary impacts, we could hear from the building level. Does that make sense? Still keep their curricular presentations at the end of the year, but hear from them and tighten up some of these presentations, maybe marry some of them and not be so specific, and probably would make Bev very happy, especially when we talk about tax cap and debt service.
I think the thing is, that part of the problem of consolidating the budget discussion is that that requirement, that for it to be manageable for Bev, we then have to stay at a relatively high level when we're talking about the budget, and not every board member wants to stay at a high level, sometimes people...
Well, that's why that's a philosophical question that we need to have, and maybe continue with John.
Well, but I mean, I think, I think it's kind of unpredictable. I mean, someone might make a present, no, I mean, it just depends on the content of what they're presenting. Like, if there's something that comes up or some, you know, we might want to go deeper in, like, one, some years we might spend a lot of time in athletics, and some years I've seen us spend very little time in athletics. And then, I just don't know how you can, I actually agree that I think we can combine it, but...
Well, I mean, I guess from what you were saying, I guess, in, you know, with respect to the presentations at the building level about what's happening with curriculum and things like that, I've never seen those as the building principals using it as a forum to advocate for things in the budget that they want, right? That's done through the superintendent in putting together the budget. So, you know, to have, you know, to expect the principals to come in and sort of say, well, here's what we need money, here's that, and present to the board, I mean, that's never been done.
That's not what...
That's not the purpose of what we want them to do.
The idea though is that having them come in and talk about their programs...
Right.
Is just information that helps us understand what is important to them and what they have been working on, what they care about. And that, to me, is really good preparation for a subsequent budget discussion that is not directly connected to what they have.
I think what I'm hearing is that we want to look at the budget process differently. And that I still think there's a lot of value in having these meetings at the end of the year. I think that the identified needs do come from the administration and they are embedded throughout all those meetings that are there in red. But what I'm hearing is maybe we want to look at delivering the budget details in a different way, where we talk about some more school-specific and break down, you know, some of the things that are happening in schools differently than we have in the past, and maybe add a little more...
Now, that I think is a good idea, because if you look, if you look back historically, the reason that we've gone through such excruciating detail, five, six meetings of breaking down every line of the budget, arose out of a time where the community was distrustful about how the budget was being done, how the budget was being put forward. And I think I could say as a fact that, and we saw that with the last, at least the last two budget votes, that I think the community is much more comfortable with the board's ability and the administration's ability, with the board's ability to approve and the administration's ability to put together a budget that makes sense. And so we might not need the level of detail on how much we're spending on toilet paper this year, but at the same time, we may want more detail about the money we're spending on curricular activities and things like that, enhancements that are being made to the buildings and to the district.
Again, I get back to, I would like to hear John's comments on this because... Again, I get back to, I would like to hear John's comments on this, because I think nothing's more important than how it comes back to the kids, and I, I'm finding it interesting that you're, you're a little hesitant to let us hear a little bit more about what's going on at the school level, earlier than the very last point in the year.
I don't want to be oppositional here, but I don't see that and take objection to the remark, and that there isn't. If there's anything that's happened in the past two years is we've brought a ton of information forward and we've had a lot of conversation, and I think we've mapped out opportunities for continued dialogue. When we've talked about the things that are placed on here now, they grew out of conversations that we identified as being need, we know Tri-State's has to be there, there's been question about instructional design, technology's been on, has been ongoing work. I don't see where that's coming from.
Are you...
Robin, you were a little bit, you were a little bit kind of direct in your comment. I didn't hear Chris saying that at all.
I didn't either.
Can I ask something then about this calendar?
He's not opposed to, he's just said, he...
Oh, I thought he was like, I think it was...
No, he was, he actually said, maybe we should rethink the budget process, which then might also include possibly a different approach to sharing information about...
Because it is, what you're saying is that it'll help guide your thinking in terms of the budget process and what we're approving and not approving. So I kind of feel what he's saying and what you're saying is kind of the same thing.
Okay, then that's fine, maybe I just wasn't listening.
It just presented differently, and I think...
But can you just clarify something for me about this calendar? Because now I'm, I'm questioning. Generally, the principals have the opportunity to come in a couple times during the year and make, you know, they'll present about, like, opening the schools and how it was going a month or two in, and then they'll come in and talk about test scores at some point. I don't see any of that. Does that mean it's not happening, or does that mean this wasn't what you were focused on when you did this?
I don't know that that happened.
I don't know what you're talking, I don't...
Oh, well, usually in the board, over the course of the year, like...
Student performance report is there in October, October 14th.
And that's something that...
That's always been the ASI.
No, no, but it used, there used to be, and again, I might not be thinking about last year, I might just be thinking about prior years, but it used to be, I've been to a lot of board meetings, that the principals would come in and present, and I felt like we would see them at least, you know, two or three times a year, there'd be an opportunity for them to come in and say something. They always presented an opening of the school.
Opening tonight.
That's what you did.
No, but no, no, they always got up there and presented.
You know what, she's referring to, but you were going way back. This is Renee Sadis, when every building principal would come in and give like a mini report on the school, our enrollment is at this number...
That was opening of school. So when Renee was a principal, I was a principal, so that was opening of school. So we used to do it differently, and actually, for opening of school, we would have a quick PowerPoint, and we all had a template, and in it you put how many, you would have your grades, so I would have fourth grade, fifth grade, or when I was at the middle school, we did the same thing in the middle school, and it was a standard template, and everybody reported the same way, and then we would sort of make it look a little better, like I used to take shots of opening day and we would throw that in, and different principals would do that. And then there came a time where somebody said, well, that's taking too much time, and so we don't need such a big opening, just tell us how it went, give us a nice little story, and we got shifted. The only other, and then I would, I would present to the board one other time each year, on this sort of the status of Main Street.
Right, and you're, right, so you're saying that's just the one.
Opening, and then one presentation.
But the opening was bigger, and that's the difference. So you're counting that as an opening.
Well, that's what, you're right, Robin, it used to be a little bit more...
And it wasn't the template that I, that I really liked, it was kind of just listening to, like, you'd throw in little tidbits about things that you were doing, and I feel like we're missing that.
Okay.
And that's kind of what I like.
But we've made our, you and I together have made our, our desire known, right?
Yeah.
So, and nobody's rejecting it completely.
Right.
He was just sort of throwing out different things.
Okay.
So why don't we take another crack at the calendar?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, no, you're right, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
And I have to say, coming into it, you know, there's a piece to it where we, you inherit a culture, so when we're, whether it's the back-to-school reports tonight, whether it was the model of budget presentations, you know, when I came in, so we go back two school years ago, I was, it was made pretty clear to me from some direct comments as well as impressions that I received, that the back-to-school presentations were as they were tonight, that they were brief, because that was the board direction in years prior, so we continued the trend there. The desire in and around the amount of detail with the budget, when I think of the budget process going back to my first year, we started doing budget work, and the first budget presentation was in December. Last year, there was a desire to condense it a little bit, and we started the first meeting in January, I think, and this model here made it even a little tighter. So it's just a matter of clarifying what expectations are. You know, honestly, when I looked to the discussion and the presentations tonight, I thought it was something nice, a warm, personal experience, as opposed to maybe the more structured model before, but if the board is looking for something different, we just need to have the conversation about it.
No, 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 I mean, speaking for myself clearly, I don't think we need to come back to the templates, but it was the conversation that came out of those meetings that I feel like we're missing. Like, like, I don't even, I think maybe even when you were the principal, that's when you talk to the board about, like, changing Immigration Day and getting rid of the trip, and that's information that I think kind of affects, it's what we like to hear. I don't see that.
Wait, wait, Rena, Rena, please, please. I understand, I just, we've already kind of, you guys are literally going around.
I know, but I think, okay, so I think you know what I mean, I'm not looking for the templates, I'm looking for kind of the qualitative insights of what's going on in the schools, and I just don't see anything until the end, and I'm hoping that maybe we could figure out a way to weave that in sooner, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right, so we will revise the calendar, taking these comments into consideration, and we will get that back, maybe as soon as the next board meeting, which is next Tuesday.
It's going to take me a couple weeks to do that.
I just, you know, I said maybe, I didn't commit to it. Now we are, so we're going to close out 10, we're done with that, we are on to our community comments from our community members, all three of you, right?
Maybe we made an hour long call.
And this is in basically anything you want to talk about, so we are here to listen. But you have three minutes, and you must announce your name and where you live, and use the microphone and smile.
Hi, I'm Michael Hand, and I live here in Irvington. I have three children, we started the middle school, and I'm sorry to miss the principals' report, but I'll quote it online, but after great two years at Main Street School, very excited about the middle school, the introduction to it's been wonderful, and the first week from the kids' home here has been excellent, so I just want to show that. I'm going to ask you a question about, you know, and most people want to enter for the previous three hours, they watched us on video, but if you had a chance to share, you know, one thing or two things about this upcoming capital bond, a lot of people may not have been able to follow the process last year, so whether Dr. Harrison wants to speak to the number of meetings in the process of last year, or whether Beverly Miller would like to talk about some of the financial aspects, or whether some of the board members might want to talk about the necessity, or some key facts about this bond. I'd love to just hear, you know, a short comment for people who are just being introduced to what this capital bond is about now, your comment.
All right.
Because we only have three weeks left till...
But we have, we have a forum on Monday.
Will you all be in attendance?
Yes, we all.
Yes, and I think you should explain, it's more of a fair than a forum, I think it's going to be quite a unique, different than the, than previous bond forums that have happened in this district. Dr. Harrison earlier this evening made reference to it and spoke about how there'll be board members there, our architects will be there with samples of certain materials, if people have questions about specifics about certain projects, they could ask them, Beverly Miller will be there to also answer any financial questions people have, the board will be there also to answer questions, any specific questions anyone has, but it's going to be like stations, but it'll start off with a short presentation from the superintendent, and then everyone can mill around and ask very specific questions or general questions that they have.
Also, too, is Artie McCormick will be there.
Oh, and Artie McCormick, our athletic director, will also be there.
And Gary Knowles will be there to discuss facilities.
Thank you.
So I think that's a better forum for actually doing that, simply because then I think we have a, a more thoughtful way of addressing your very broad direction, your very broad question.
So is that, is that going to be recorded in any way, that on there?
I don't know.
I think it's difficult, because people are going to get staked and stand.
Are you prepared to do what, are you prepared to do what Michael just asked us to do?
I don't, I don't know if the format would allow for it.
You know, you know what, I, I think what I would, I would suggest is, and maybe it's at the next meeting, so I understand, I think, where you're getting, is that, you know, we've obviously done multiple meetings regarding the, the bond vote, how we've come up with the projects, how we've budgeted, et cetera, et cetera. It may be good for us, and maybe it's already in the materials, I know there's been materials sent to every resident in the community outlining the boards and the administration's reasoning for the bond and breaking it down, but at least referring the community to the dates of those meetings so that they could pop on YouTube and, and look at those meetings if they, if they so choose. I don't know that, you know, I don't know if Dr. Harrison's actually prepared to give a rundown or has his slides handy.
We're also meeting again next Tuesday, and we'll talk about whether or not that's an appropriate time to do that, how's that?
That'd be great, but I guess, you know, I think, as you suggested, that there's a lot of trust in the work that the board is doing based on, you know, elections and votes the past couple of years, but if somebody is just coming to the issue.
Yeah.
I'd love for you guys, not just an unfair presentation, but, you know, some way that somebody can see online, to briefly get an introduction of how they might learn about the bond, I appreciate the documents that are being put out, that are very informative.
I, I think all...
But the board meetings are very long.
Right.
And if you guys are able to share something online that's a couple minutes.
I, I think, I think one of the things that, that the community should understand is, and it's on the district website, there's been a six-minute video put together outlining the district's rationale and needs for pursuing this bond, so if somebody does want an initial primer as to why we're, why we're suggesting this and why we're asking for the vote, they can go to the district's website and take a look at that video, so that's about six minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of know what Michael's saying, I mean, I, that's, that's a big commitment of time to sit there and watch that. I think what you're saying is just like a few key bullet points, just to give someone the background.
I think the video is very good, I learned a lot by watching that, I learned a lot from reading the document that was mailed out to the community.
Long.
But it's about, but it is about community, and I think people do have trust in you, and if they really hear from you, that's very helpful for them in terms of coming to decision.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else, any other comments? Please state your name and your residence.
Hi, I'm, I just wanted to thank you all for funding a full-time athletic trainer. I, now that I have a ninth grader and a, and he's a football player as well, it's, it's really helpful and reassuring to have that athletic trainer around and available, you know, practices, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for funding the happen.
Thank you. All right, so I guess...
Everyone, can I, you're going to kill me, but I just have one quick thought.
Well, we're about to, there's a place for you to...
There is? Oh, okay, oh, I thought you were going to close, sorry.
So we just close out our community questions, and we segue...
Not a community.
To Board of Education discussion, which is an opportunity for you to bring up any other pressing issues, such as now.
It's pressing, it's just one thought, as I, as I was listening to Michael, and I was thinking about, like, all the time that we actually spend in board meetings on field and space study, I actually think we might end up with some free time that we're not expecting, because I actually think we forget, like, that took a lot of board meeting time last year, a lot, and we don't thankfully, right now, have that kind of a major time chunk to focus on the board. So I, just taking a step back, I actually think maybe for all of us, there might be more time than we're kind of thinking, so.
Well, no, I act, oh, I'm sorry.
I just need to be mindful of whatever the Long Range Planning Committee comes up with, too, is, is going to capture some time.
Yeah, that's going to take some time.
And, and also, don't forget that we had very long meetings, because we were packing too many things into these meetings, and we were all, like, checking out after...
No, 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 I, no, I'm not, I'm aware of that, but, but then again, I was thinking every single, like, for a while there, every single meeting had a long field component, plus then we were doing other things on top of it, but if you take out the field component, you might actually be able, in some cases, to do not just one thing, but two, because nothing's going to be, I don't think, as long as some of those field discussions, when you brought in, you know, the whole dog and pony show and all the people and all the, and the PowerPoint presentations were long. Again, just a thought, I mean, it really did, I kind of forgotten how much time, until you talk, like, we really did spend a lot of board meeting time on fields, so, just a comment.
All right, so that concludes our meeting tonight. Our next meeting is September 16th at 7:30, and we will have an executive, executive session that precedes that, as the calendar indicates, to discuss our superintendent's review.
That would be in post, preceding that would be for the Audit Finance Committee.
Fine, thank you. And now I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, I mean, Bob made motion, Maria seconded.
So are we not all going to the forums and the fair?